Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I did have only one topic to discuss tonight. It was supposed to be a short reply of the mayor, who characterized the topics discussed at this podium over the last few months as trivial. But then, I read the absolutely biased and incredibly incredible spread in last week's Webster Herald, in which there was an attempt to trivialize and degrade this village board. So then I had two topics. But really, they're the same topic and connected. First of all, I've had personal discussions with each of you. Even the mayor and I, who don't see eye to eye on many issues, had a cordial ninety-minute conversation. And you really are pretty decent people. Also, I sat where you sit now for eight years. There's a lot of work at being a board member. And in your hearts, though sometimes I doubt the mayor's motivations, I think you all want what is best for the village. So keeping all that in mind, I was stunned when the headline in the Herald said the town rebuked the village board. How can a town board rebuke an equivalent board? That'd be like the Webster Town Board rebuking the Penfield Town Board. It's just not done, and it's wrong. You are not subservient to the town board. You are its equal. That headline directly denigrates you, your work, and your reputations. Later in the article, two of you are taken to task for just asking, just asking questions of a government employee. Every citizen has a right, has that right. And you, as board members, have perhaps the greater right, no matter what government that employee works for. What we have here is a bullying attempt to suppress your viewpoints and opinions. It's the same motivation the mayor has proclaiming anything coming from this podium as trivial. And that brings us to the second topic. Now, the mayor likes research, and I agree with him. And he says he's good at it. So I did my research on what was actually said at this podium. I actually used the excellent minutes prepared by Josette and Northea, and came up with a list of fifty-four items. I think when I read them, you will agree, none of them were trivial. So why did the mayor say they are? It seems to me that's because the mayor doesn't want us to speak up here at all. When we do, whoever "we" really is, there might be negative topics covered. And negative is now a code word for topics that some people just do not want discussed. And that is why you are being asked to consider taking the public comment off-camera. But those comments will still be discussed, and recorded, and posted, even if they are off-camera. The trustees in this board have stood pretty resolute against bullying. Even when you are told you must support the mayor, you have decided for a different course. And that is what a board is supposed to do. I encourage you to yet stand fast. But no matter what, I still thank you for allowing me to speak. Now for that list. I may run out of time before I finish, and that's okay, because I don't make a point. Human rights complaint by village employees against mayor, offers to purchase the wealth field property, opposition to the gun ban, overnight parking on village streets, presentation rules, problems with village credit cards, public comment rules, recouping money due from the badger meters, retention of the Webster's Village Sewer Treatment Plant, sewer billing issues, sewer fee, suggestions to establish a call-in period, surface water quality, the 2013, 14, 15, and 16 village budgets, the construction of a village cell tower, the destruction of an original meeting video, the frequency of personnel matters, the historic rail depot on North Avenue, the industrial appraisal of the wealth field, the mayor doing unauthorized background checks, the mayor targeting specific village employees, the mayor's inability to manage, the mayor's past disorder of behavior at village board meetings, the core design of the village website, an incident at the Harmony House, board member salaries, bond payments, business vacancies on Main Street, cable fees, cleanup of village meeting rooms, code enforcement issues, collecting taxpayer money for lawn mowing, concerns about a nuisance law, conduct during village call-ins, crossing signs across, development at Solory Court, discontinuing live call-in time, disproportionate impact of sewer fee, financial audits, hydrant flow questions, FOIL results from the village, free speech issues, the village fee schedule, trespassing by the mayor, unauthorized expenses, unilateral access.
Seven thirty-five.
Perfect. That's what I was hoping you'd say.
I want to give us copies of your list at once.
Could I give it to you?
Absolutely.
Okay. All you have. Is that right?
All right.
Okay. You got it.
Thank you very much.
I want to pick up on one of the comments that Peter just mentioned, and that's for... This entire changing of the rules of the speaking from the audience, from the taxpayers who pay your salaries, has all come up because of bullying from the town supervisor. He's come in and said he didn't want it. He doesn't want it. He doesn't want anyone to speak up. That has been mirrored by our mayor as well. They've picked out one person, me, that they don't like. And they've done everything that they could to silence me. That's not going to happen. In fact, if we go off-camera, I expect that you'll hear more from me than you do now. Additionally, taking this off-camera takes away the rights of the people of the village and the town to see what's going on at the meetings, and to be able to call in, and to be able to pick up on items that we might bring up at the podium. So by taking away the right to have this on-camera, you take away the rights of the people. We've had this on-camera for years and years and years. And there's been, there's been times when there's problems. But the good overrides the bad completely. And I hope that you see that. And that our comments are meant to be constructive and to help both you and the village. Taking it offline is a bad idea, sets a bad precedent, and caves to a bully. That's what's going to happen if you take it offline. I respectfully request that you do not move it off-camera, and to seven o'clock. Thank you.
What else this evening? First off, we have a resolution to approve the minutes of the village board meeting of June twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen. The only thing that I would like to see changed is on page two, paragraph three, sentence number two, where it says the town board made a reference to the open in the fourth segment where a village resident accused a town... I believe the letter did name who the resident was. Josette? So I would like the resident's name included in the official minutes. That's the only thing that I would request to change in the minutes. Other than that, I have no issues whatsoever.
Can you disagree?
Absolutely. We disagree, for the purpose. I just wanted the minister to reflect who the specific resident was made the accusation, that's all. Because the letter did, in fact, name the resident.
Do you have the letter with you?
No, I don't have the letter with me.
Because I don't recall the letter mentioning anybody by name.
I don't either. I thought it did.
It could have, though.
My recollection is different. So I would suggest that Josette look at the letter and find the name.
There's a mention that it's not included.
Folks, you got it.
I may have it. Anthony, it says, "During this meeting, the village resident is not given any."
Okay. Hold on. I'll find the minutes. I entertain a motion of second to accept the minutes as written for June twenty-third.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay. Next, we have the village board workshop meetings of July fifth, two thousand and sixteen.
At that meeting, village board business, Don White was... Everybody was present, actually, and trustee Byers, trustee Lancy, trustee Velcane, trustee Apolito, and attorney White. Trustee Byers discussed the estimate received from Don Carpenter regarding, from CCG, regarding consulting services, probable cost of construction of a new cell tower on Webster Road near the water tank. Board asked Superintendent Twingley to state the proposal from CCG for consulting services, which the board can then consider. Trustee Byers also discussed his efforts in seeking additional quotes, as he was asked to do. He specifically discussed his contract for contact with Tim Conley from AT&amp;T. Trustee Byers and Superintendent Twingley will follow up with the contact from AT&amp;T regarding additional consultants. Mayor Cahill offered a discussion on scheduling a joint workshop with the town and village to discuss the public access channel contract, the intermunicipal SDP agreements. Recent discussions and correspondence have taken place regarding the videotaping and airing of the village board meetings. In addition, the town is nearing completion of a study of their sewage treatment plant. Mayor Cahill suggested the meeting take place after the town receives the final draft of the SDP study. A discussion was held regarding scheduling a meeting. Trustee Byers asked what the goal of the meeting would be as it relates to the SDP. The mayor offered that as the study recommendations are discussed, he would like to have a discussion with the town regarding any impact upon the village. Trustee Byers felt that he would like to receive a response to his letter regarding the public access channel prior to scheduling the meeting. Trustees Lancy and Apolito felt that any meeting scheduled should include conditions regarding the content and tone of the meeting. Mayor Cahill offered to email the town supervisor regarding the meeting, the trustees concerned, and will see see in the rest of the village board. Executive session, we went into executive session at seven twenty-one to discuss CSEA union and village response to a demand for arbitration regarding the November twenty-fifth health insurance grievance. All were in favor and carried. A motion was made to exit from the executive session at eight twenty-one. And a motion was made by trustee Apolito, suggested by trustee Lancy to retain Don White to respond to the demand for arbitration from the CSEA regarding the health insurance grievance. All were in very favor and carried. The adjournment was at eight twenty-four.
Any questions? All right. I'll entertain the motion of second to accept the village board workshop meetings of July fifth.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right. Next, we have a resolution for the claim warrants. We give the votes in the session.
I did.
Any questions?
I had no questions. One question that I had regarding the workers' comp renewal was answered, and that did a split, total bill was split between the sewer departments and the general. So I have no problem with that. I just wondered why same numbers were showing out to different places, but that was answered. So I have no question with anything in the timeline.
Are those true? You probably don't know since Jake's not here, but fifteen, the trees we're getting, that's all we're getting, is fifteen? Is any of that?
We were seventeen, I thought. You were eight.
They just haven't ordered the others yet, nor have they been built for them.
They're full of seventeen, or?
Yes.
For the trees?
Yes.
They're already drumming in a couple of places around Webster Mill.
Hey, you got a ton of water.
Yeah, I mean, you've really got a lot of water.
And they've been out there. I mean, it's not like I haven't seen those guys out there early morning.
Well, look at the lawns all over New York County. It's in the middle of a drought in New York State right now, so. I don't know whether... I'll talk to Jake about getting some time weekends to...
They have been, I think. They've been out.
I heard about Sunday. I'm not sure.
No, they've been out.
All right. I'll entertain a motion of second to approve the claims warrants.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
All right. Next, we have authorization for Mayor Cahill to sign the warranty renewal for the HP server through LNT, and the amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty-five dollars.
I'll make that motion.
One second. Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
It's Don Curtis.
Thank you.
All right. Next is the resolution for an authorization to hire a cell tower consultant. We were supposed to have Mr. Carpenter's actual proposal for this meeting. Apparently, he's been out of town and also ill. So he hasn't had the opportunity to put the formal proposal together. The amount that he quoted was for twelve thousand dollars. But we don't have the specific proposal yet. This is something that we've all agreed we need to do. At the last board meeting, I expressed a desire to have somebody in the same field for a competitive quote, which we did, in fact, receive, which was significantly higher than Mr. Carpenter's.
It's not really significantly higher.
Well, the quotes as far as his projected cost for building a tower, his consulting fees, that's significantly higher.
Well, that's all you're considering now is the professional services, because everything else is subject to a public bid. And I was certainly questioned when somebody says it's a hundred thousand dollars to build a tower, and the other one says four hundred thousand.
Right.
I scratch my head and wonder where this guy that says a hundred is coming from. Since two other ones said five hundred thousand, another one said four hundred, now we got this guy at a hundred.
And also, just as far as... But just as background, though, we did meet... Darrell, myself, Jake, met with Nud, contracting, who actually builds these towers. And he gave us projected costs of two hundred thousand dollars. And that was, what, about a year and a half ago? Two years ago? We met with him.
Well, that's still twice as much as this other person.
But it's significantly less than five hundred thousand, so.
All right. But I just, you know, when you look at the preliminary proposal by this other person, Network Development Services, you know, Michael Wilson, he includes stuff that I wonder if Mr. Carpenter had, you know, like the gravel, rock, fencing, landscaping. You know, you're not going to... You know, I just don't think Mr. Carpenter, you know...
Hit the poll.
Yeah. I don't think he's got everything in that hundred thousand dollar number. And then in the consulting part of it, you know, according to Mr. Wilson, there's a bunch of FAA, FCC requirements that even in this preliminary email aren't already in there. So I kind of wonder about that, too.
Well, and when we met with the cell providers as far as FCC regulations and requirements go, and you're below, I believe, was two hundred feet, Darrell? Because there is no specific special requirements. So... But my concern is we don't have a detailed proposal from Mr. Carpenter, which is why I'd like to table this until we do get a defined proposal from Mr. Carpenter.
You're okay with that?
Next meeting?
Yeah. And I just think we never get apples to apples when we don't dictate what we want. So we don't, you know, we don't put a bid package and say, this is what we want. So this guy's pretty much detailed every single thing. Do we need him to do all of these things? That's our next step. And if we do, then let him use this as an example and say, all right.
Right. I would note that, you know, again, Mr. Wilson, he's got the tower height, a hundred and ninety-five feet, below two hundred feet.
Right.
Yet he's still got all this FAA stuff in there.
Exactly.
So either, he doesn't know what he's talking about.
It's not required. We had the three, we had the three stakeholders in the cell companies here. Tim Conley's been in business for forty years.
Right.
And, you know, I trust the guy knows what he's talking about when he says it. So special license is required if you're under two hundred feet.
But are you over two hundred feet when you're assembling or disassembling?
Well, this is what I'm wondering.
Cranes and stuff?
No. It's when it's done. It's the height of it when it's built.
Yeah. But there's no regulation if you're above two hundred feet while you're constructing?
Well, not when you're constructing.
Just the final construction. One of the things that I think bothered me is that the numbers that came out at the conversation that we had up there at the tower. He finally came out and said at the end, well, you know, if this seems a little high and may have a problem with your budget and so on, we have the sales package, we have the sales group that can get with you and can possibly work out, you know, something where you get a percentage and we can work through this. So that right there at the end kind of said, okay, you've got very high numbers here. And even referenced using Don Carpenter, because he's a reasonable cost in developing, you know, site plans and so on. So yes, I would like to wait until Don, you know, gives us something formal. In fact, maybe both of them give us something formal. But I would ask, once we get that, that we consider going into a call-in a special meeting for immediate consideration.
Absolutely. Sure. No problem.
I think Don will get back very quickly. Jake had conversations with him today. And Mike said he was ill over the weekend, so.
Do you think we'll be ready then by your next meeting?
I wanted to feel like that before the next meeting, like that in this...
Well, yeah, it would be, but...
I think Jake's been in contact with him emailin the back of the board, and he knows there's a sense of urgency to get this package to us. So hopefully, before the end of the week or by the end of the week at the latest, you can have a proposal to us for consideration. We can read it via email, put together a special board meeting, and then...
I don't know, Don, if you have this particular email where Don went through and did document a number of things. You have... Yeah, I got that. You have that? Yeah. Look at the details? Yeah, photo. Yeah, it's hard to follow. But yes, I got it. This email? Yeah. Yeah, instruction and all that. What's the reason for the urgency?
We have three years to get this tower up and use the regular...
Well, when I said three years up?
Yeah.
And if you're up against the timeline, perhaps you want to talk to the water authority and see if they'll extend the three years?
Yeah.
And you tell them you're in the process of, you know, doing all this, and... Well, I think that's part of it. We're in that process. I just think something, if an entity the size of the village in Webster... And again, this is only my, this is really isn't a legal thing, but you're looking to spend somewhere between a hundred thousand and five hundred thousand dollars. You shouldn't be doing stuff at special meetings. You know, they should be done in regular, open, you know, public meetings and that. You know, not at special meetings of the board where...
Rush, rush, hurry.
Yeah. You know, so... Water Authority generally is pretty reasonable. And if you ask them, look, can you give us another six months or something?
You're under game today, tonight, Don. It's a good point to dwell.
I think Mr. will probably give you the survey.
Yeah. Yes, they do.
I think there was about three out of the top ten were a part of it.
Yes. I think four. Yes. So then, can we...
I don't have a problem with that, but I think we are going to have to...
Okay.
So do you think, again, we can get a response by our next meeting, so we don't have to have special anything?
I would hope so.
Okay. So I think you guys have a plan, right?
All right. So I'll entertain a motion of second to table this resolution for authorization to hire a cell tower consultant. Tell our next scheduled board meeting, which is July twenty-eighth.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right. Next is discussion in regards to revisions to village policies, two five and two six, including moving the open to the floor comment to thirty, two seventy PM. And everybody knows, you've been emailing back and forth. Meeting did take place between the liaison to the public access channel and trustee Byers. And the two options, according to Ms. Barton, she was in favor of implementing at the same time, which would bring us back to being filmed live, included moving the public portion to seven o'clock. And also to allow any board member to call for a recess. And upon majority vote, you would return all the recesses.
I like the recess. I don't like moving it to seven o'clock.
I just, I would like to clarify, because Barton had read the email, actually, that Karen said. When we were done, there was, you know, accidents can occur in meetings with tempers problematic, because tempers were allowed to flare to the point that multiple cursors were uttered in that one, in many parts of the room. Additionally, most of the propensity took place during the open to the floor portion. Thus, here are two possible solutions that came up on the meeting yesterday. One, move the open to the floor portion of the meeting seven PM on camera. Other towns always implement this or would be under character of other stations before setting a precedent. Two, revise the meeting conduct policy to add in the guidelines stating that the board deserves the right to call a recess at any point during the meeting to address behavioral concerns in the room. That would allow a board member to either speak with the audience or remove any disruptive persons. I believe it's core time to say, I believe these are both reasonable solutions to this issue. However, it will be that all members of the board will need to agree to both solutions and work together to enforce that system. So that was what she said to us. And at that meeting, I said that I would take it upon myself to work on rewriting the policy so that it would include that. I did bring it to the board at a workshop, and we had discussion on it. And it was tabled. There were a number of things that were in the current open to the floor and meeting conduct policy that we have now that were at issue with Mayor in particular. And then we had the insertion of the recess, which in the meeting conduct right now, it says, "A recess upon majority vote may be requested at any time by any board member if a violation of the meeting conduct rule is observed or intrusive and disruptive and/or disruptive behavior in the audience occurs." And it goes on. Then one of the things that was backed from the town is how are you going to enforce anything along those lines? Well, with the town supervisor says, laughing, he has a little button underneath his table, which is true, to notify the police, I guess, to come up. But, "Any board member, number six, may request to have removed from the meeting any person or persons whose actions are in violation of meeting conduct rules, intrusive or disruptive upon a majority vote. Should such person or persons refuse to leave the meeting, 911 would be called and request the assistance of the town of Webster Police Department." So I think that should take care of how we would ask that person or have that person removed.
And while we have shown as a board that we have shown the inability to follow through with that, in addition to my conversations with Karen Buck personally, subsequent to your meeting with her as it relates to the two options that in her not only discussion with me, but also in print, that the two options were not mutually exclusive, they were to be implemented at the same time, what she thought would be acceptable to her to bring the meetings back live. That was prior to what I would say was some very disparaging comments by Mr. Reynolds directed towards her. And subsequent to that, the town board finally stepped in and said that we will no longer film your meetings until acceptable revision to your board meetings are presented to the town board. And it seems to me that, you know, we already know what will be acceptable or what was acceptable to Ms. Buck subsequent to your meeting. So I stated my reasons over more than one time. And this dates back to you bringing this up, Darryl, I believe it was two years ago, subsequent to your conversations with Ritz, who was the mayor of Fairport, and the same similar conditions at that point existed. And I said back then I would support it. And I support, again, the option you put forward as far as moving the public portion to 7:00 from a legal standpoint. Filming these meetings is not a constitutional right. Actually, the open to the floor portion of our meeting is not a right either. I would never take that away, but I think it's just come to the point that, you know... Well, you know my position on that.
I certainly do. I think that these are, in terms of going live, they are not mutually exclusive. However, the proposed changes to section 2.5 and 2.6 of the Village of Webster Policy Manual should be voted upon separately from the 7:00 move. This is a change to our policy manual in the village. I do not intend to pass this on as a draft for the town approval. I do not believe that the town has any right to dictate to the village what we establish as our meeting conduct or open to the floor policy. I think it has addressed what was asked for. The only thing actually that was asked for was for provision for a recess, if you search through. So in terms of that, I would like to propose to the board, I would like to ask for a motion to accept the proposed changes to section 2.5 and 2.6 as they have been written.
Well, before that, I would like to comment that I would like added to that that the open to the floor section will begin at 7:00 P.M. outside camp. That's what I would like to see, and I will not be in favor of anything that does not include that. That's just my opinion and my feelings. And as far as your statement regarding the town dictating what we should have in our rules with respect to them filming them, they're not dictating. They would like to see what you would put together that would be acceptable to them and that the agreement that we have with the town allows for that, for them to... Actually, it doesn't even, the agreement doesn't even say that they have to come in and take. But, you know, it goes back to the discussion that you had. I disagree with the statement that you made, Darryl, regarding it being mutually exclusive. I reiterate my...
I didn't say that.
Let me just finish. I, you did say that. I've got emails to show that you said that, that they were mutually exclusive. They're not mutually exclusive. They were to be implemented together in an effort to go live. That's what Karen said, and I stand by that. That's my position on this.
All right. I will make public an email that says I did not say that they are mutually inclusive in order to go live. They are mutually inclusive, and I will produce that email and I will make it public.
Okay.
Okay? We can put it onto our website, just like Ron apparently sends emails to the Webster Herald that you send to him. Well, that's interesting. That opens up a whole other can of worms. However, this is a change to our policy, and I am asking for a motion to vote on these changes as they are. You have your idea of changing it in terms of time as well, including time, but I think that we can then vote separately on that resolution, and I intend to bring that up as a separate because in order to go live, as you say, they have asked for two things. This, however, is one.
What'd you say, Jerry?
Since we'll just ask a motion for both.
Yeah, Darryl, you said you're asking for a motion. Does that mean you're proposing the motion, or do you want somebody else to make the motion?
I will propose a motion for policy changes to section 2.5 and 2.6 of the village, open to the floor, public comment, call-in, and meeting conduct.
And I will second that.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
No.
Motion passed.
No. And the second case, I would like to consider the moving to 7:00 of the public comment. That is another condition that they were talking about in terms of how we're going live again, or at least the consideration. I believe it was a consideration of going live, if we were to make that move from 7:30 to 7:00. So, right?
No. That's not my understanding, but...
It's definite?
My understanding was from subsequent to your meeting, the two options that you put together, you put forward a...
We discussed two options.
We discussed them.
All right. You're going to interrupt me on trying to...
These are grown adults on the board.
You put forward the fact that A, here's what we want to do together to go live. We will move the public portion to 7:00. And B, we will make sure that we give any board member the option to call a recess together, those two, at that meeting, was put to Karen, to which she agreed, that they were put together, those two. She was fine with going back live again. Okay?
Okay. So here's the proposal.
So that's why I guess I don't understand why it's not added in as number 1A or 9 in open to the floor, public comment section, why it's treated separately.
There never was specification in there about that. There has not been in here specification. So I do not intend to put it in.
There's nothing in there that says, there's no reason you can't add it. It doesn't matter. It's never been in there before.
I don't wish to make that proposal. Do you want to make that proposal?
I, yes, I do.
Go ahead.
I already did, and you've already said no. You didn't want to have it in there. You wanted to vote on it separately. Okay?
So you want to vote on it separately?
Sure.
Fine. I will make that motion to move the board public comment period from 7:30 to 7:00.
I will second that motion.
Trustee Byers?
No.
Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Trustee Lancy?
No.
Trustee Apolito?
No.
Motion do not count.
That, you, the course this evening? Uh, no? Who's that?
Well, we have the comp time report. Maybe we should wait for Jake.
Yes, I think he's got questions. What he did is an agreement.
It looks like normal comp times are already before we think...
Yep.
All right. Looks like we have a bunch of budget modifications.
Year-end cleanup.
Pardon?
Year-end cleanup.
All right. So the first budget modification we have is we're moving from electric 10,108.96 and from the financial advisor 430 to 29, we're moving it to the village attorney, and that is due to the con litigation expenses. The village attorney was higher than anticipated by the time. Next is taxes.
And the electric won't be shut off or anything? We're good?
No, the monies wouldn't be taken from the line where there wasn't anything to take.
Okay. Good. Kind of what I wanted to hear.
Yeah. Those next three look silly because they're so small, but I can't technically...
Got it, Louie.
I can't make movements from a 400 to a 100 without authorization.
24 cents from the village property taxes to the zoning board. We've got 24 cents for taxes on village property with planning board, and that was a slight adjustment for rounding. We've got $17 coming out of bounty council going to dues and conferences. The line was originally budgeted for classes were taken by the zoning board, thus for a little overage. Next, we've got CHIPS personnel, $973.10 going to building, building village house. This is just a year-end adjustment. Next is bounty council, $1843.85 going to safety inspection personnel. Safety personnel line was hired due to overtime, and we get duty pay incurred during the 2016 fiscal year. Trustee Lancy, you had a question regarding CHIPS personnel?
Yeah, just that the CHIPS personnel, can you kind of just let me know, we're moving it from...
CHIPS?
Yeah.
To the other lines in the budget?
Because...
Because the other lines, we, when Jake does the budget, he allot certain amounts based on previous experience as to how much we're going to spend in certain lines. We had $19,000 left over at the end of the year that...
Oh, in CHIPS?
Yes. That's why it's going to the other lines that were over.
Oh, okay, because we don't expect to spend it?
No.
Okay.
This is going to be, once these are done, our financials will be finished.
This is on last year's budget?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are 2016...
So it's not like you're transferring money?
Exactly.
No, no, no. It's 2016 fiscal year adjustments to close out everything and be done. I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear. I apologize.
But don't apologize. That's why we ask these questions. Good, thank you.
All right. Actually, we have CHIPS personnel, 64157 going to parking lot personnel, and another CHIPS personnel going refutes collection, 42933. CHIPS personnel, 176468 going to shade trees personnel. CHIPS personnel going parks recreation personnel, 580589172. Music, shirts, and awards, 48 cents. Going to restoring personnel, rounding sewer treatment personnel, 269156. Purchased auto bad, external deep impulator, and emergency purchase of tires for W-17 and I'm free just to watch it.
Okay.
Last page, we've got 5,0042872, excuse me, sewer treatment personnel and going to storm sewer personnel. CHIPS personnel, 8,000, $2,076 going to street cleaning personnel. Street cleaning personnel was under budgeted for while CHIPS was over budgeted for. Again, we're just adjusting it for year-end. Last, we have retirement at 14 to 83 going to clothing. Again, year-end adjustments. So I'll entertain a motion second to accept the modifications as prepared by our board treasurer unless there are any questions, which I see there is one. You're up.
I don't have a question. I do want to thank Chris for helping me understand for people who are out here, when I looked at the financials at the actual end of the year and the modifications that are here, I came to you and said there are 35 other items that haven't been balanced, and that's because we can balance those within a particular group and those have been balanced or answered or transferred.
Exactly.
So I appreciate that, and for those of you checking as well, this takes care of the balance for the year.
You would kindly send the year-end report to everyone regarding the follow-up of finance and compare what we budgeted for, what was actually...
Oh, sure. Once it's all finished, all right, so we'll certainly forward that.
I'm fairly certain that we came in under budget pretty significantly this year, which is, which is a very positive thing. We were obviously helped with the lack of overtime due to the lack of snow this year that helped a lot. Everybody did a good job watching the expenditures this year, so thank you very much, Christina.
I do want to also add, if anybody's interested, the village has collected 96% of their taxes to date.
Nice. How many? You told me that you guys processed 1,500 or something like that, you and...
We collected in one day, I think it was about $120,000 about two Fridays ago, I think it was.
And how many people was that? What that encompasses?
Thirty, sixty, ninety, probably about 120 to 150 payments.
You guys have been very busy, so thank you very much for that. All right. So next we have an executive session.
With our motion?
I interrupted.
Yeah, you did. I apologize. I want to have a motion second to accept the budget modifications as drafted and presented by our village treasurer, Christine Leesack. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you for that.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right. Next, we have executive session to discuss the village contract negotiations with CSEA, also to discuss the arbitration regarding house prepared agreements, and to discuss pending litigation about the sewer treatment planning commenced by microcon, polycon, and other neighboring property owners. So I will entertain a motion second to go into executive session for those reasons.
I'll second it.
Mayor?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito? Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Christine, you're good. I'll entertain a motion second to allow the mayor to sign the petition seeking a stay of arbitration of the healthcare agreements.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, I'll entertain a motion second to close the village board meeting.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passes, 9:09 p.m.